Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Pursuant to the Texan Open Meeting, Zach, this is a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas. Today is Tuesday, November the 26th, 2019. It is 9:00 a.m. We are in the central jury room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street here in Granberry, Texas, 7604H. So I've called- And today it's my great pleasure to introduce the minister or pastor who is going to give us the invocation. The reason I really do like this guy is that he is the pastor of my church, but I see a lot of people out there, so he's the pastor of our church. But he's an upstanding gentleman, and he's really with the Lord, and he gives great sermons every Sunday and does a lot for the community. And once again, I want to thank Dr. Bill Miller for arranging this, and I think we've had ministers and pastors from churches all over Hood County come up here and give the invocation. So it is my great pleasure here today to welcome Pastor Dan Jones to come up here and give us the invocation for today.
Thank you, Ron. Let's pray. Father, we ask that you would be with us this morning. Lord, we ask especially that you would give wisdom and insight, direction, that you would guide us. Pray for these men as they lead our county, Lord. We're so thankful for the county that we have and for the town that we live in, and, Lord, we know that you're here, and it's obvious in the way that this body operates and the decisions that are made. And we just ask that you would bless as we go forward, not that you would bless what we want to do, Lord, but that you would guide us to do things the way you want so that you could bless. So I ask for that wisdom to prevail here today and in the many days to come, and that you would just watch over all that we do, and that what we do and say today would be pleasing to you as we take care of the business that you've given us to attend to. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now join me in a pledge of allegiance to this great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You pledge allegiance to Texas.
On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Now comes my favorite part of a Commissioners' Court, and that is to honor the employees of Hood County that have worked here steadily and dutifully and happily. I spoke with one of the recipients today, and she said that she's just so happy to come to work here every day, and I said, "That's exactly what we like." So I guess the first one is Sean McGuire, who is-
He's working this morning up at dispatch. We're shorthanded up there because people are off for a training conference. So I'll get that certificate to you.
Okay, good deal. Thank you, Sheriff. Next is Elva Garcia, five years. I happen to know this lady, and she does a good job, Jay.
She does a very good job.
Very good job, and we all like her very much, and don't anybody here think y'all gonna take her either.
Thank you.
Hey, the next recipient is Linda Mallon, 10 years.
We will honor her in December.
Oh, in December. Okay, good. All right. Here's the next one. I don't know if we can all get behind this or not, but there's a lady newcomer here in the county named Glenda Mockbee. Do y'all know who she is? She's the person that keeps this Commissioners' Court all straight, so we all want to take a picture with her, 15 years on the job, happily.
Taking your hat, Jane?
Yes.
We'll prop her up to a spin.
I'd like to say a few words about Glenda. She's been a real help. She's got her back, she takes care of us. She does a lot of things, she's doing those she does. I really correctly appreciate what she does for us. She's an asset to the county, and Glenda, we love you and appreciate the hard work she put up. Commissioners, 15 years. How many Commissioners have you seen? Yeah, there's been several, haven't there? She's been on the board, and we appreciate what she did.
You're getting good.
I want you to know I'm standing right there.
Does anybody want to roast it a little bit?
I don't know, the oyster might come back at you.
See, most people wouldn't even come up in that kind of condition, but she is.
Okay, that brings us down to Vivian Sturtevant, 30 years. 30 years. Gosh, I was just in the sixth grade, I think.
Right. That's a good bet.
Vivian is absolutely essential to my office, and I love coming to work with her every day. We could not run the office without her, and I look forward to having her around for another 30 years.
Okay. Thank all of y'all for all your hard work and dedication to the Hood County, Texas government. The next item I'd like to bring out is that if anybody here would like to speak today, the Sheriff's Deeds has public participation forms, so anything that's on the agenda, you can fill out the form, and you will be allowed to speak on it. The sheriff has the forms, and you will be allocated a maximum of five minutes. So that brings us down to the consent agenda. Does any of the Commissioners have anything they wish to pull off the consent agenda, sir? Okay, no one wishes to pull anything off. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, move.
Motion's been made by Commissioner White to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0. Okay, next item, purchasing. Consider to renew RFP 2016-014 Bottle Water Service Contract for Ready Refresh. Is that you, Ms. Elda?
It is, but it's on the consent.
Oh, that's on the consent.
We're down to eight.
So Clint, how could I slight you in that fashion? First of all, road ops, I talked to Mr. Lenny, no road ops today. Okay, you're excused then. Okay, all right. Clint Head?
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners.
Set a public hearing, right?
Yes. The first item we have today is an application's been accepted for a replat of Oak Country Estates Track 1R and 2R in Precinct 2. Staff recommends setting the public hearing for December 26, 2019, Commissioners' Court.
Judge, I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for the replat of Oak Country Estates Tracks 1R and 2R for December the 26th.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Cotton to set a public hearing for Oak Country Estates Tracks I, 1R, and 2R in Precinct 2. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0.
The second item we have today is a replat of lots 8R and 9R, Block 6 of Hightaway Bay Estates. It is the replating of lots 8 and 9, Block 6 of Hightaway Bay, creating a 0.303 thousandths of an acre tract called Lot 8R and a 0.368 thousandths of an acre tract called 9R. Property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 4 and is served by public water and will be served by onsite sewage facility.
Okay, at this time, we're going to reach this into a public hearing then to discuss and consider for approval the following replat, Hightaway Bay Estates, Lots 8R and 9R, Block 6, and Precinct 4. Have any discussion? Do you recommend this?
Staff has reviewed this replat and recommends approval of the replat, Lots 8R and 9R, Block 6, Hightaway Bay Estates, as presented.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the Hightaway Bay Estates replat, Lots 8R and 9R, Block 6, as stated by Mr. Head.
We need to close the hearing.
No, but I will right now. Okay, I want to close the public hearing, but Dave Eagle didn't hear me, but he has made the motion, so everybody got the motion. Katie? So Dave Eagle has made a motion to approve the Hightaway Bay Estates, Lots 8R and 9R, Block 6. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Dever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Head. Okay, financial.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Ms. Kid.
I'm going to let you read that whole thing, Judge.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Okay. Expenditures for the November 26, 2019, Commissioners' Court are $462,824.71. The Auditor's Office has reviewed all these invoices and recommends payment.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion to pay the expenditures for November 26, 2019, Commissioners' Court of $462,824.71.
Motion been made by Commissioner White to approve for payment the $462,824.71 for November 26, November the 7th, 2019 through November the 20th, 2019, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0. Next item, Ms. Kid.
And we did this backwards, so let's go here. Were there any questions on invoices over $10,000?
No.
This $154,000, that's to Garland?
Yes, sir.
Is that the final, is that the final payment to them?
No, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion concerning the financial reports received and reviewed by the Audit Department for the period of November 1st, 2019 through November 15th, 2019? Do I hear a motion?
Oh, move.
Motion been made by Commissioner White to approve and take appropriate action for payment of these invoices from November 1st, 2019 through November 15th, 2019. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0. Okay. Under miscellaneous, what we're going to do is that-
Wait, we have one more, Judge. Item number two, the monthly reports. Did you, I thought he was the, you did the monthly report?
You just said that.
I'm a day behind.
Yes, we did, we voted on the first one for portion, then we voted on that one.
We went up, we went down. Thank you, Judge.
Eggnog is for the evening, Ms. Kid.
And I didn't bring enough for everybody, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. All right, that brings us down to miscellaneous, and that's with sadness here today that we have Ken Hackett here, and his mother has passed away, and her funeral is this afternoon, and we please accept all of our condolences, Mr. Hackett, but we're going to move up item eight, which is to consider and take appropriate action to close the square parking during Christmas Parade on November the 29th. And so Mr. Hackett is in charge of the merchants associations around there, so he's going to come up here and speak on item number eight, which we're taking out of order here to accommodate you.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you, Judge, for doing this. Our interest on this item is strictly to get clarification on the timing, and so we can convey that to our merchants. So we do agree with the closing of the square during the Christmas Parade. We just need to know what to expect so we can convey that to all of our member merchants.
Okay. I spoke to James Dickens yesterday afternoon, and he's in charge of when the parade starts and when it ends, and he told me that if we could get a sign up so that everybody knows that the square parking could be opened until 5:15, but we need to make sure that all the cars then are out by 5:15. So I'm suggesting that we have a sign up there on both entrances down there that says that all cars must be removed from the parking lot by 5:15 due to safety for the children that will be running back and forth. So if we put safety of the children, I think that our citizens will respect that and will definitely get the cars out. And then Mr. Dickens says that the merchants are keeping their stores and restaurants and stuff open at night, and that we have opened the parking lot again by 8:15. He says that would give plenty of time for everything, and then a lot of the restaurants and stores are going to stay open till 10:00 or maybe even later than that. So would that accommodate everybody?
That is excellent for our part. What's wrong with 8:15?
This is Diane Hedges.
I own one of the businesses downtown. We've never closed the square for parking during the parade, ever. Parking has been open all day. Just by default, when the parade starts, you can't move in and out of the parking lot anyway because the roads are blocked. But if you tell people they can't park there, that will directly affect my business, every restaurant, the opera house, all of those people will have people coming and going and parking. Most of those people will have parked and stayed there for a while, but at that point, we've just never closed the parking part. Do you know what I'm saying? Like we would if we had a festival in there. So all the merchants that I've talked to do not want the parking closed. The streets get closed by the police department so that the parade can go around, but that will directly affect that, and there's supposed to be rain. So if there's rain and the parking is closed, people are just not going to bother to come downtown if they have to. That's my personal.
Okay, here's the balancing act, too. We, of course, want all the merchants to do well. The courthouse is decorated, the city is decorated, the corners of it, it looks beautifully. Hopefully, it draws a lot of people from surrounding counties and people into it. We really want the business, and the business to help the merchants. But Constable Jividen spoke at our last Commissioners' Court meeting, and she reported that when that parade is over, that these young children are just running through the square, and that she saw two children almost get run over, and that's why she came and brought it to the attention of the court. None of us realize that that Friday after that was Black Friday, and a lot of people, Mr. Hackett, Mr. Dickens, and everybody says, you know, we can't do that to the merchants. And so we've all been talking, and we want to accommodate everybody. It's not our intention to restrict y'all at all. The only thing is, is that if one child got hurt in that parking lot during that time, I mean, that is just something that we would feel horrible about, and she was-
And we think it's because of Santa's House? Is that the concern?
Well, we got both. We got the Santa Claus house that's there, and then we got Mr. and Mrs. Claus down in the gazebo.
Right.
So we got two deals, and those kids, we've traded and put the Santa Claus house on the courthouse green so they wouldn't, and it's facing towards the courthouse, so when young kids get out, you know, they get all excited. We didn't want them facing and running out towards the street. But the only, the only concern that we have up here is just the safety of young children. That's it. I know you want to say something, please.
Sylvia Hickey, and I've been in charge of the inside part of the parade for some 15 years with the passing out of the candles, and there are people that come the day before, on Thanksgiving, and put their vehicles there, and they come and they put their chairs out. If you decide that you're going to close it, those people are going to have to come and get their stuff and get out, and that's going to be mayhem. The second part is, you know, my car's going to be in there because of where the candles are that we give the volunteers that pass them out. The next part is that there needs to be some direction. I absolutely 100% agree, but where that needs to be is we need an officer on the entrance on Crockett and on the entrance on Houston, because once that's full, the people that are just going around trying to get a spot in there, and it is packed, there's no reason for them to come in. And so that would be, what would be helpful, is that they are not allowed to come in after, say, 5:15, 5:00. But those that are already there in parks from either shopping or, have you ever seen the Fourth of July Parade? And it's all up the street, and they put those pickups backed in there and the chairs and stuff out on July the 3rd? It's the same thing. And so to change that for people that have done it for years would be, I don't know what they would, they wouldn't follow it, is what I'm afraid. And the children, if there were officers there, those children, and I don't want to, maybe I shouldn't say this, I'll tell you another time, but there are reasons that those children are being, running around is their parents aren't taking care of them.
They call their what?
Their parents aren't taking care of them, is what we see. And so if there was an officer or two there, that might be very helpful to that situation. Thank you.
Okay.
We get, we've got a couple of constables back there. Could we get some comment from one of them about the issue? It was brought up from one of the constables. I don't see Catherine here, but-
Kathy Jividen is not here, but I do see two upstanding constables here, Delton and Chad. Would y'all come up here and see if there's anything? Lynn McDonald's not doing much, is he?
Yeah, he's one point, thank you, Judge.
Oh, he's got, do y'all have any suggestion? I know both of y'all are concerned with safety and around-
You know, for years, it's been, as they've said, you know, we've never closed the parking lot. There is concern about the kids. We are, as Granberry Hood County, we're growing, and the merchants know, and we all know, we got more and more people coming in. So if anything, if you don't close the parking lot, aside from having a bunch of us out there, the other suggestion is you close it once it's full, and once you're in, you're not moving until that timeframe. I mean, those are things to look at that way, to make sure, even after, maybe 8:30, I mean, depending upon the traffic.
My main concern was after the parade's over, then the kids are going to the Santa House, and then you've got cars trying to get out. I think that was-
And then we still have a line of people, and we've seen people even lined up to Santa's House till 10:00 at night.
Yes.
So we have so many people coming down there to the square.
It's not incoming, it was more-
And that's when they're inside, they're locked in, and you're not getting out till 8:30. So I mean, that's totally up to however the court wants to decide to do that. But we've always, for years, had issues with this, with kids and so many people down on the square, because everybody wants to come see Santa.
Would it cost the county anything to have some constables out there that were?
If I don't have, if Morris isn't working the hospital this weekend, my reserve and possibly Carpenter, I know Carpenter's supposed to be out of town to come help us out there, so we'll see how we can place some of that to get some of the staff to come in.
Do you think that what should happen here is that also that between the time, I guess, from the time that the parade, nobody has a problem with keeping the parking lot open till 5:30, okay? So we got that, pass that. And then between 5:30 and like 8:15, is that no cars can come in and none leave?
Judge, that's what I was going to propose, that we create some new signs that egress and degress will be stopped during those hours, and that way, the people who are in, they'll know that they're trapped, we'll have the barricades out, and if the constables could support that, then I think we'll solve this problem real quick.
Okay. So that just is, we just stop all the movement of cars moving inside the county square parking lot. That'd be fine, just knowing, that even helps y'all out. That means y'all got a, y'all got a captured audience, so you might as well go shop and eat some more or go do it, so maybe that's-
So to speak. Let's hope we don't capture them.
Yeah. Okay. So do I hear a motion in that regard?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that from 5:30 to 8:30, we completely close down the square, inside parking lot. Can't get out, you can't get in.
And we'll put some signs up to effect that.
Yeah, and you'll put in there, and this is for the children's safety of coming out of Santa's House and seeing Mr. and Mrs. Santa.
Very good.
5:30, all right. Someone said 5:15 earlier. Is 5:30 good?
Well, he says by 5:00, so the parade starts at 6:00, so probably it needs to shut it. Can you amend your motion from 5:00 to 8:15, there be no movement? Nobody gets in, nobody gets out.
Is that agreeable?
Yes.
So from 5:15-
No, 5:00 to 8:15.
Yes.
5:00 PM.
God, here's 4:45.
5:00 to 8:15 is what James Dickens told me that would really work, that everybody, so just close the, no cars moving-
No internet.
-inside the parking lot between 5:00 PM and 8:15.
All right.
Okay.
Take care of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody second?
I'll second that. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Judge.
Thank all of y'all, so we got a solution. Thank you. Okay. Now back to the regular miscellaneous schedule, as item number one, discuss and take appropriate action to approve amended salary position for 2020. These positions and corresponding salaries will be set for the remainder of the fiscal year 2020. Individual salaries will not be increased unless an employee is moving to an existing open position.
Yeah, Judge, I brought this before the court for some discussion and clarification. Back in September 10th of the Commissioners' Court, we approved a position salary matrix, and then last court, we had to ask Becky to come back with an amended position salary matrix. You know, it's my belief, it's my belief that the county needs a firm, consistent, and structured salary. You know, I think we need to adopt a structure and stick with it, you know, at least until we can get, you know, we got a study being done. I think, Melissa, we're supposed to open up the bids pretty soon, and, you know, I'm all for promotions and raises and all that, but I think every good, every good business has a salary structure, you know. In the 1920 budget, we have budgeted over $19 million for salaries, you know. It's just, and that is $1.4 million over what we, over the previous year, you know, and if you think about it even more, that's two to two and a half cents on the tax rate. I just was wanting to bring this forward and get some discussion from the other court members and see what their opinions are. members and see what their opinions are. And it's just, I think the court has done an admirable job in the last year or two or couple of courts in trying to be more competitive with the salaries that are comparable with other counties. You know, we've increased our retirement from 200% match to 250 match, you know. It's just, you know, and we've given raises from 6%, 8%, some of them greater, you know, depending on what they, what they were being paid. We've tried to adjust everything. You know, I just think, I would like to hear some comments from the other court members on this subject.
Any discussion on this?
Judge, I agree with Commissioner White. I've been on the court the longest and seen some of the chairs being moved around here and there, and this would kind of put a lock on, on some of the stuff that's, and I, I get it, I mean, every, every boss wants to get, try to get their employee more money, but we need to put a, a stop to this and go by the salary matrix. And, and, and I, I agree with what Commissioner White is doing, and I, I think it needs to be done.
The exception is, is that if there's an opening position that an employee is moving into, that is already in the salary matrix. And so they would just move into the salary matrix. It's not like just having an ad hoc increase in some position. You have to move into a position. Okay? Anybody have anything else they want to say?
Well, I was just curious as to what the status is on the salary survey. Do we, anyone have any idea?
Yes. The proposals are due today at 2:00 PM, and then we open today at 2:00.
So we received one.
So we received a proposal to do the survey?
Yes, sir.
One?
Yes, sir.
And today's the cutoff time?
That's correct.
And what's the estimate of how long that will take?
We have asked that they try to have the survey done in approximately four to five months.
So we'll have it before the next budget?
That is our goal, yes.
You know, I know I'd like to see the budget start probably in May or, you know, a little bit earlier.
Certainly, we want it to be done with the survey by end of April, mid, end of April.
So do I, knowing that that salary study is coming up for every position, it's going to be a very in-depth study. And knowing what we say here, that it doesn't prevent anybody from moving up as long as there's a position that's open in that department. You can move up in that position, and that's already an existing salary for that. But you take that salary at, at that position. So if you're moving up and the person that had that position prior doesn't have as many years with the county, there still will not be an increase. You just move into that position and draw that salary that is vacant. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion in that regard?
Judge, I'll make a motion to accept the 2020 position salary metrics. All positions will be filled at the salary coinciding with each position.
I'll sec- second that, Judge.
Okay, second, our motion's been made by Commissioner White regarding that the individual salaries will not be increased unless an employee is moving to an existing opening position, that the salaries be set as we did on September the 10th of 2019. Second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioner White and Becky. Okay, item number two, discuss new procedure for redistributing interest earned from First Financial Bank.
Good morning.
Good morning, Leigh Ann.
I feel like I'm too close, but not close enough. Every month, we receive interest earned from the bank. And you see that on the interest earned statement or report that you get every month. I had the bank come to me in October, and they have not been charging us their fees for the last two years. So with that being said, they started charging us their bank fees, which is in our contract with purchasing, they started charging in October. I got the first deduction from the bank with the bank fees, which was about $7,600.
For one month?
Same, for the month, $7,600. Well, $7,594.98. So with that being said, you know, of course, I got a detailed on what everything was being charged, and I'm going through it line by line, what can we do without, you know, asking all these questions to the Vice President, you know. All along, they are supposed to be charging us this, which is fine, but this is the first time for me, so I'm going to nitpick it. So we've nitpicked enough to where our $7,500 a month will now be 500.
$500?
500. So she called me, I didn't even tell Becky that, but she, the President just called me the other day, and she said, you know, this is too much for a public entity to be paying 7500. We're talking about every remote deposit that we do, we're getting charged a fee just to have our remote deposit machine. It, it's a monthly fee. You've got fees if, you know, they're cash and checks that are not from our bank. So all those little fees add up, and it's a lot. We have 48 bank accounts. So anyways, with that being said, typically, we will take our interest earned, which in September was $13,000, $13,474.72. That's September's earned interest from the bank only. So we'll take that interest earned, and we distribute it through the county. So there's GL accounts, like our Fund 10.
I have an idea.
Huh?
I have an idea.
Wait, I'm not done. Our Fund 10, typically, we'll get majority of it, but it gets distributed through the county. So I just wanted to bring to you that we will be redistributing this interest earned differently now, since we have this new fee that should have been charged the whole time. So we'll take the interest earned minus the fee, now 500, which could have been a lot worse. And we will redistribute the amount, amount after the fees are done to the rest. So you'll see the interest at a certain amount, but what's redistributed will be a little bit less. And that's all I wanted to let you guys know. It's hard to explain that through paperwork, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. You don't ever see it. All you see is interest earned, and you don't see us redistributing it. Do y'all have any questions?
So, yeah, the only, yeah, just to clarify for me, you're going to redistribute it just as you've done before, but it's going to be $500 less than what you used to, so if you see the interest rate, so you're just advising us that...
I'm just letting you know that a little bit, we're going to take the interest earned minus our fees.
Did the bank try to go back and get any previous?
No. No, they started in October, but of course, when I saw the 7,500, it was a little stressful for me. So I'm just glad that the, the bank worked with us and is going to do that set fee no matter what goes on. I mean, that's a lot less, and we have a little bit more interest to redistribute now. So, but that was all, all it was.
This is almost like negative interest. This is almost like negative interest, where banks are going to start charging us. The bank has our money, the county's money.
Yes.
And they're charging us for holding our money.
Yes.
It's kind of like...
Yes.
You know, you'd never thought that that was ever going to happen in your lifetime, did you? And now it is.
Well, and thank goodness, we haven't had the fees...
Is there any financial institutions around here that would like to just hold the money?
Thank goodness, I mean, we do a lot of business with them every day. I mean, there's times that I'm calling them two or three times a day. There's times where, I mean, we're making all these deposits through all the other offices. So they do a lot for us, and they...
So it's a lot of bookkeeping, is what you're saying?
Right, right. I mean, there's times that they've taken off fees if I've seen a fee, and they, you know, they just take it off because I ask. So they've, they've really come through on this one, and I'm extremely excited it's not 7,600. And that's all I have, thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
No.
I had the exact reaction you did, Commissioner Eagle. I about fell through the floor.
Yes.
Thought as much money as we have in that bank...
Not as bad as I did.
Well, we both were having meltdowns. But I have a, what might be an easier way to do this, we can create a line account with a budget and pay, use that, and then you don't have to worry about dispersing the interest. Everybody gets their interest. We just call it an expense, because it's bank fees.
I like dispersing, we just, we just, I like redistributing the interest.
You still redistribute. You just don't have to worry about the $500.
No, and we'll take it off the top, so we won't have to do that.
Okay. I just wanted to capture it separate, because it's an expense.
We'll work it out.
It's an expense.
We'll work it out.
And that's why I wanted to capture it separate.
I got faith in both of y'all.
We'll work it out.
I can tell y'all are going to work this out.
Yeah. It'll be my way.
Or the highway.
Let me ask you this, how much does, you see, you redistribute it, how much does a normal department get? What is their monthly distribution? You know, like, maybe you only do it twice a year, do it every six month?
I think if you do it twice a year, if you're not doing it monthly, it's really hard to keep up with it. It's too much.
Oh.
But you've got, you've got resource officers, they get .05%. You've got the general fund at this time gets 70.53%.
It's going to depend on the balance in the bank at that point.
So it's just easier to go ahead and distribute and keep everything straight?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, you've got several different offices, state education and donations.
Thank you, since my head is spinning, and I'm still getting around here, so let's move on. Do I hear a motion in this regard?
I'm not sure that we really need a motion.
You don't need a motion?
No.
Okay, you just going to work out a new procedure?
I'm just clarifying what is actually, it's always been done, it just needs to be, we need to take that fee off, so we're not absorbing that fee somewhere else.
Expect the fee before you do the distribution.
Right.
Good. Thank you for that update. Does anybody got any Tylenol out here? Okay, thank you. All right, let's go into item number three, consider and take appropriate action regarding the ballot for the election of three members to the Hood Central Appropriate District Board of Directors. There was a form that circulated around here. I have gotten mine and handed, filled mine in and handed it to Alicia.
I have it, Judge.
Oh, Katie Lang has my form. I have voted for three members. If the...
Can I turn mine into, who do I turn it into?
I think Ms. Lang.
I shall collect them.
You will collect them.
Okay.
So you will tally them and then give us the results, right?
Yes.
Okay.
What you wish.
Okay, so it's nothing then to do with that, till we get the results from this election. That brings us to item number four, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the use of the gazebo for the annual Bible reading marathon on Thursday, May the 7th, 2020, from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM, May 8th, 2020, through May 12th, 2020, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and May 13th, 2020, from 7:00 AM to 9:30 PM. I sponsored that. We have had that here, and I can see Pastor Mike McMahon here. He believes in securing that gazebo in plenty of time, but I think that has brought really worldwide attention and has resulted in people moving from as far away as Montana to Hood County because they heard that the Bible was being read from the county square. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. I, I just think, is anybody here on this court brave enough to fight against this proposal? That's what I want to hear. I'm certainly not. So I'm, in fact, making a motion to allow the use of the gazebo for the annual Bible reading marathon on Thursday, May the 7th, 2020, from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM, May 8th, 2020, through May 12th, 2020, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and May 13th, 2020, from 7:00 AM to 9:30 PM.
I got to second that, Judge.
Second by Commissioner Dever. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Good to see both Mr. and Mrs. McHan, if they're Pastor and Mrs. McHan. Good people, good project, y'all do a lot. This is really, really good stuff here for the county. We need a little bit more of that kind of treatment around here in the gazebo. Okay, item number five, consider and take appropriate action regarding the sheriff/fire marshal's request to purchase 80 section of 5-inch large diameter supply hose for the county pumper/tankers to replace hose that is the original hose from 2001 that is now failing hose testing. The cost is $41,000. But it would be cost a whole lot more as for the fire trucks or the pumpers to be out putting out Dr. Gator's house fire and get out there and the hose burst, and the water be on the ground and none on your home, Dr. Gator. I mean, that would be horrible situation here. So Sheriff, tell us about this.
Judge, Commissioners, when it came to my attention, I believe this is truly an emergency because, yeah, if we can't, just like you've been saying, if we can't get the water to the, to the home, to the fire to put it out, then we got a big problem. Sometimes you can't get the trucks that close, and hydrants are far away, skinny driveways, a lot of different reasons why you can't get it in there. So when it came to my attention, I asked them, and you asked me too, about the testing, and I got a couple of, from Crescent and Indian Harbor, the results back from their testing, and it's all failing. They, every year, they do a series of testing from the inch and a half diameter hose, inch and three-quarter diameter hose, on up to the 5-inch stuff. And it's all failing. And so Indian Harbor has lost all their hose, that 5-inch hose that was purchased originally in 2001. Crescent is the same, same way, it just, it's just old, it's getting brittle, it's just wearing out. So need to do something and replace all that. The, what, the packet I have given to you, it has, Daco is on top, so the cheapest price that I got was $520 per section. So what I'm asking for is 80 sections total, and that'll replace all eight trucks, so 8,000 foot of this hose. Underneath there is five other quotes, so six counting this Daco one, and they're all considerably higher. $610 a section, $712.80 a section, and, and it goes, goes on up from there. Daco is a good reputable company, been around a long time, and they're on buy board, and the buy board number is 524-17 for this particular item. So I do believe this is an emergency. We need to get this hose replaced on those trucks to make sure we can continue to serve the good citizens of Hood County and put out those fires. So I ask at this time that you approve this, this quote.
Okay, any further discussion or questions of the sheriff?
These are 100-foot hoses, right, Roger?
Yeah, you can get them shorter, but the 100-foot, when they're, they're what lays in the top center section of the trucks up there, and so you can anchor it at the hydrant or the water source and then drive away from it and unfold. So it's better to have the longer sections. You don't want to get any longer than 100, but you can get it made in shorter sections. It just costs more.
And they're tested to 450 pounds?
Um, four, yeah, let me, I believe 400 or 450 is the test pressure. Actually, on that...
That's the proof test, it says.
Yeah, actually, it goes to 200 pounds on the flow test for that big diameter hose. On the smaller test, it's inch and a half diameter is 400 pounds, but this, this hose is failing at 200 pounds pressure.
Have you got any speculation as to why some of the other hoses are so much more expensive, size of the brand, or something like that?
Brands, quantity, you know, they buy it from different places, so they're not buying it from, you know, cheaper places, so, but that one, we started looking at the, the prices, and a lot of these are internet quotes, too. But that one, we started looking at the prices, and a lot of these are internet quotes, too. They just came in a lot higher. Daco is a good reputable place, like I said, and they're on buy board anyway, so they were the cheapest price and on buy board.
Got 10-year warranty also, I see. 10-years warranty?
That I'm not sure about. I don't have it on this quote.
Are you recommending it?
I am definitely recommending going with Daco to order this hose and get it done as soon as we can.
You know, when a hose lasts 18 years, I think you've got your money's worth.
We've definitely got our money's worth out of this hose, yes.
Is there a way to tag those?
Probably if we draw on it with a Sharpie or something with a, because I don't think it would hold a regular, the regular tag.
Could you engrave on this metal coupling?
That possibly would work to engrave on there.
Okay, because we need, I would like, when you get them, to do that before they go anywhere. That way, we don't have to worry about it down the line.
We can do that.
Let's come, Auditor, this come out of Fund 55, or...
That's where we choose to...
Yeah. We have any money left now that money that was in the fire marshal's stuff? I mean, can it, can it be used for that?
I did a purchase order, actually, yesterday for, I can't remember the...
SCBA?
Yes, yeah, self-contained breathing apparatus, and so it was just under $70,000. So that was for that money that's been back and forth, the who's is it?
That's what I...
What can we do with it? So, no, I've spent that as of the other day, yesterday. So this will be a request, I guess. I ask you to pull it out of Fund 55.
Okay.
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the sheriff fire marshal's request to purchase 80 sections of 5-inch large diameter supply hose for the county pumper tankers to replace hoses. That is the original hose from 2001 that is now failing hose test at a cost of 400 and, I mean, $41,600. And I guess this is a Daco quote?
Correct.
I think it could be out of Fund 55, I would appreciate it.
And it will come out of Fund 55, and if possible, we'll engrave the, on the metal...
Yeah, we'll get it tagged or engraved, whatever works the best. We'll make sure that happens.
I'll second that. Okay, motion been made by Commissioner White to approve the request of the sheriff fire marshal's request to purchase 80 sections of the 5-inch diameter supply hose for the county pumper tankers to replace the hose from 2001 that is failing testing at a cost of $41,600 from Fund 55 from the manufacturer or the seller, Daco. Second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Sheriff slash Fire Marshal.
Thank you.
Glad you caught that. Glad you caught that.
Oh, they brought it to my attention, so.
Yeah, that's, that's real good. Okay. Next item, authorize the county judge to sign the SAV NS savings. That's good. Maintenance grant contract. What is that?
Judge, Commissioners, what this is, we've had this for, I don't even know what year it started, but it's a contract between the county and the state that we provide the information. Once a person is arrested for domestic violence, then the victim is made aware when that suspect does get out of jail, for whatever reason, if he bonds out. So it's a system that's been in place for a long time, and works great, to notify the victims that a person is getting out of jail. So we need to keep this going.
I don't think we need any more discussion on that, do we?
It's basically computer equipment that interfaces with our system that goes into the system when they're brought in, and then it's notified to the state so they can make the notifications to the, to the victim at the time when they do get out of jail, for whatever reason.
Judge, then I'll make the motion to authorize the county judge to sign the SAV NS maintenance grant contract.
Your second.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Eagle. Okay, so the motion's been made by Commissioner White to authorize the, Commissioner Cotton?
Cotton.
Yeah, to authorize the county judge to sign the SAV NS maintenance grant contract, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item number seven, authorize the county judge to sign the particip...
Do you want to do the, go back to the present just for the...
To the what?
The vote for the... Item three.
Item three.
Item three. Go back to item three.
Item three.
Count the votes.
Oh, you have counted the votes? Okay. We have a tie? Do you have two that have won outright?
Okay, I counted up all the votes, and we have two winners, and then three people tied. So I need, I put the three people that tied in this cup, and we need one more winner. So I'll have you pick a winner. That be okay?
Okay. Very.
Sounds professional.
I'll let you read it.
Okay, so we have three winners, Van Vernon, Terry Johnson, and Bobby Mayberry.
Okay. All right.
I'll repeat that. Van Vernon, Terry Johnson, and Bobby Mayberry.
Okay. So I guess what we need now is to make a motion to elect the three of those to the, these three gentlemen, as board members to the Hood, Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
I'll make that motion if we nominate Van Vernon, Terry Johnson, Bobby Mayberry to serve on the appraisal district board.
Okay, now here's second. Now here's second.
Second.
Second by, motion's been made by Commissioner Eagle that we elect Van Turner, Terry Johnson, Bobby Mayberry as the directors.
Van Vernon.
Van Vernon was the first.
Van Vernon, I'm sorry. Van Vernon, know him well, as the three members to the Hood County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors, second by Commissioner White. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. It's item number three. Okay, now, that brings us to item number seven, which is authorize the county judge to sign the participating entity service agreement for the statewide automated victim notification service. Savins again, okay?
Yes, this, this is just like part two of the contract.
Okay.
This, this contract has a lot of moving parts, and, and there will be another one. This is a pass-through grant, but I believe they have changed the way they want to handle it this year. In prior years, the state was invoiced directly. I believe that this year, we will have to pay and get reimbursement unless we do some type of waiver. I'm going to work out the details with them. It really makes no difference. We can do it either way. It will not impact our budget.
Good. Okay, but this is something that's really neat. Again, this is notifying the victim of when the perpetrator is being released.
And the victim can also call in and find out a date if there's a parole hearing, so that they could write letters if they choose to.
It's all about keeping the victim up to, up on what's going on in their case.
Great. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A motion been made by Commissioner Dever to authorize the county judge to sign the participating entity service agreement for the statewide automated victim notification service.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Ms. Kidd and Sheriff slash Fire Marshal. All right. Good job, Sheriff. We've got another job that we'd like for you to get, but it doesn't pay anything either for the extra job. It is... Yeah, we're just gonna pay for the sheriff, but we've got the fire marshal, but there's another job we need to talk to you about. Anyway, that brings us to the last item, which is item number nine, discuss and take appropriate action to consider the appointment of library director. Make convenient to executive section pursuant to section 551.074. As many of you know, we had a special session of the Commissioners Court last week, and the purpose of that was to call a special meeting, and we allowed citizens at that time to voice their opinion for the library director position. The Commissioners Court then recessed into executive session, and we interviewed three applicants at that time. We initially started out with seven, two got new jobs, two didn't have the required credentials that required due to Rhiana Graham resigning and moving to Seguin in her new position. And again, all of us wish you the best of luck in your new position, and you're young, and I'm sure that you're headed to the Library of Congress, you said Library.
I appreciate that.
Okay, all right. So here, we're, we're gonna discuss and take appropriate action to consider the appointment, and I have one person, Dr. Harold Granik, who would like to speak on this, on the appointment of the library director. Only have one participation form, so Dr. Granik, the podium is yours, sir.
Well, brevity is the soul of wisdom, or something like that. So I defer to the wisdom of the court to select a library director with credentials and quality of our previous three library directors of my knowledge, to serve well and with equity all this interest in citizens of the Hood County community.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, I think at, at this time, I'm assuming that we have three applicants, and so we have done this in the past by assigning a number to each of the applicants or just putting their names and, and voting on the names. Do I have any suggestions from any of the Commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint Jennifer Logstine as the library director to be effective with what we discussed before. I think, I think that Rhiana's last day is next week, and she's available shortly thereafter. So my motion is to appoint Jennifer Logstine as library director.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Eagle to appoint Jennifer Logstine as library director, second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Ms. Jennifer Lux, Logstine?
Logstine.
Logstine, L-O-G-S-D-O-N, will be the new library director. Thank you all very, very much. This concludes the business for today.